Hello, everyone, and thank you for joining us at East High School or on CapTimes.com for tonight's Madison School Board Forum, featuring the three candidates who are on the April 4th ballot, and a special thanks to CapTimes members who are with us. I'm Scott Gerard, and I'm the CapTimes K-12 Education Reporter and one of your co-moderators for tonight's event. There are two seats up for election this spring, though only Seat 6 has two candidates on the ballot, in Badri Lankhella and Blair Mosner Feltham. Nikki Vandermeulen, the incumbent in Seat 7, is running unopposed for her third term. We will ask questions directed at individual candidates for tonight's event, and others will have a few opportunities to offer rebuttals to questions they'd like to add input on. I'd also like to thank those who submitted questions online. We got a bunch, and we won't be able to get to all of them, but we tried to incorporate the themes where we could throughout our questions, but we really appreciate all of the submissions. First, I'll pass it off to my co-moderator to introduce herself.
Hello, everyone. My name is Taylor Kilgore. I'm an editor at Simpson Street Free Press, Dane County's all-academic, student-run newspaper. I grew up -- thank you. I grew up as a student working at Simpson Street since I was in 8th grade, and I'm a graduate of UW-Madison Journalism School. And so, thank you for being here. Before Scott gets started, I also want to thank all of our candidates for being here today.
So, we'll begin with opening statements, and I did a random number generator to determine the order of these. So Nikki, you're up first. You have two minutes.
Hi. I'm first going to apologize for my voice. My beloved Warhawks from UW-Whitewater were in the national title last weekend, and I kind of shot my voice cheering too loud. But I'm glad to be here tonight. My name is Nikki Vandermeulen, and I am running for Seat 7 of the Madison Metropolitan School Board, and this is going to be my third term. I came back and decided I was going to run again because I have a love for students, a love for learning, and, most importantly, an absolute desire to create a school that is equitable for every student, and one that is transparent, works for people, and actually focuses on student needs, not just student achievement scores. I think that we have made quite a bit of strides in some areas, which is excellent, but we need to focus on areas such as English-language learners, culturally-relevant materials, and, most importantly, we need to make sure our special education programs are fully inclusive, not being pulled out where students are pulled out of the classroom, and that students get what they need on a daily basis. Unfortunately, that doesn't always happen. I speak from experience on that. I've had an IP when I was in school for 13 years. My parents filed grievance to get me into public education. I realize how important that education is, and I want to provide a voice for the voiceless and all students. Thank you.
Badri, you're second. Oh, two minutes.
Hi. My name is Badri Lankhella, the second difficult name on that ballot you guys are going to go through on April 4th. Look it up. I'm the second one, right? So, I am a parent of two high school students in MMSD. I'm always the -- I'm a first-generation immigrant, came to USA with $500 in my pocket, American dreams. And I'm a very strong believer that the dreams also comes to responsibilities and duties. And I feel giving back to the community was one of my number-one duties to this community that actually welcomed me well into this Madison community. So, for the last 20 years, I've been serving several communities, organizations, nonprofit organizations, HOAs on the West Side. We live on the West Side of the Madison, giving back to the schools. My kids, from the elementary school onwards, I was actively involved with their school programs and all. PDAs, teaching the kids computer science, and I'm civil engineer, computer engineer, and also business administration, have a lot of experience in managing organizations, policymaking, budget tracking, and all those, right, big budgets. Giving back to community was the big goal. That's the reason why I'm running. Last year, the housing crisis was the biggest one, and I worked on it and gave all my earnings to Habitat for Humanity. And this year, trusted leaders in the community have asked me, there is a need here in the board because of the budgets and the transparency requirement for this school district. I will bring that to the community. Thanks.
Thank you. And finally, Blair, you have two minutes.
Thanks. My name is Blair Mosner Feltham. I am married to a wonderful person. I like swimming. I have little kids who will start at Emerson in the fall, but, most importantly for this conversation, up until this summer, I was an MMSD teacher. I have been serving MMSD students since 2014, first as a Special Education Assistant at LVM Elementary, where I worked in kindergarten classrooms, then as a social studies teacher and instructional coach at West High. I've taught thousands of teenagers in required academic classes, US History, World History, Cultural Geography, Econ, and Government. I'm a committed and experienced public schools advocate. Before teaching here in Madison, I taught at two high schools in California, where I began my career and earned my Master's in Education. I currently work in a public high school in a neighboring district. That's 12 years of professional experience in public schools, not adjacent to public schools, not after-school or specialty programs, but in the everyday school experience. What this means is that I know how schools work. I know how MMSD schools work. I know what happens when a policy or initiative passed at a Board of Education meeting hits the classroom. I know how great ideas thrive or wither in schools, and I know what happens when we get sold a bill of goods and bad ideas hurt our schools and our students. I'm running to serve on the Board of Ed to be a bridge. If I'm elected, I will bring my school and classroom experience to bear so that we can make budgetary and policy decisions that stand a chance of being successful. I will bring my deep experience in schools so that we can tell the difference between something that sounds good and something that is good. I love and believe in MMSD. I love and believe in public schools in the promise and hope of pooling our communal resources to care for and nurture the young people in our city. And I know that schools and school systems are complex. It is not possible to make good decisions for schools if you don't know how schools work. I know how schools work. I hope you'll vote for me so that I can bring my knowledge and experience to the Board of Ed in the service of Madison youth.
We'll get started with our questions. The first question is for Badri, and just a reminder, these are 90-second responses. Only 34.9% of students in grades 3 through 8 scored proficient or advanced on the statewide forward exam in 2018 and 2019. The results were worse for every non-white group of students other than Asian. Last year, around this time, the school board chose two new curricula to guide the school district's early literacy efforts. As this curriculum is implemented, what is -- or what do you think is the board's role in ensuring we continue to address the disparities in literacy for MMSD?
It's a very good question. It's not just about that, right? So, the early literacy problem is actually -- needs to be tackled at early age in the elementary school. We need to -- it's not only coming just within the school. The disparity is also coming from the community as well, so we need to actually involve the community, educate the community as well. Parents in the community has to be involved in making that the kids are getting the right safe environment to learn. Literacy also starts with not having a safe environment outside the schools, inside the schools. And every kid has their own medium they excel well on. We need to identify where the gaps are for those kids to give them the right program that actually fits with their needs. We have programs that are not meeting those requirements now. Kids are graduating without having that literacy rates. Thank you.
Blair and Nikki, would either of you like to add anything?
I would.
Okay. You have one minute.
Okay. So, one thing that people don't know is that when you buy a curriculum, sometimes you have to buy other pieces, and one of those early literacy curricula that MMSD purchased was supposed to have manipulatives, the things that like help students be interested in the work when they're in the classroom. MMSD did not buy them. And when teachers said, hey, where's my timer or my, you know, thing the kids are supposed to touch, whatever it is, they got told, those are optional. And this, to me, is an example of what happens when you make budgetary decisions without thinking about what the student experience is going to be like. I would love to see the board, when deciding, what are we going to spend our money on, not to just say, okay, yeah, we think this is going to move the data. That's a terrible way of thinking about children you're supposed to care about, but actually saying, what will the student experience of this curriculum be like, and how can we support that to be fantastic for kids? I'm done. Thanks.
Nikki, do you have anything?
Yes. No, I 100% agree, Blair. We need to be more actively involved. Every time the board tried on the curriculum this year, we were told we were out of our lane. This wasn't part of our school board experience, and that we weren't professionals, so we shouldn't be allowed to weigh in on that. That's one of my more frustrating things. How you teach reading is essential. We need to have it phonics-based, because not everyone learns by sight-reading. We need it to be concise. We need it to be understandable, and, most importantly, can we please keep focusing on Orton Gillingham for those who are dyslexic, because it's a very specific learning style. It has to be taught in a very specific manner.
Badri, you have 30 seconds if you'd like to add anything else. You're good. All right. The second question is for Nikki, and it's what you were just speaking on. So, around the country and in Wisconsin, more schools are adopting the research-backed science of reading principles, which have a heavier focus on phonics, among other things, and sounding out words versus using context clues. What are your positions regarding overall reading instruction and the science of reading?
Yes, on the science of reading. We need to realize that context clues and sight words, although that is the way I learned how to read, but that is due to a processing issue on my disability. That is not the majority of kids. So, we need to make sure that kids know how to sound it out. You can't skip words, because then you miss what the entire sentence is about, and by the time you realize it, it totally changes the meaning. So, after 3rd grade, you're reading to -- you're not learning to read, you're reading to learn. So, if you have more difficulties, it will only get harder. What we also need to realize on the science of reading is, we -- numbers are wonderful, but this might be the only time I've ever sworn in a debate, but I plan on doing it, and it says, as Mark Twain said, there are three types of lies in this world: lies, damn lies, and statistics. If we rely solely on statistics instead of talking to the students, instead of talking to the teachers, we are not going to get a robust education. Instead, we're going to get students who are learning to the test and nothing more. So, we need to refocus that. Additionally, we can't do that without staffing, and right now, that's what's holding us back.
Badri or Blair, would either of you like to add anything?
I would.
Go. Go ahead. You have a minute.
Okay. Two things that I want to say about this. One is that when you look at research, like the science of reading research, which I like, the assumptions about what the classrooms it's going to happen in are not the conditions that we have in our public schools. And so, you need to be cognizant of that when you're trying to make decisions about how something is going to show up in schools, that we do not have the classrooms that this research is based on. We do not have those dream conditions. And the second thing is that while the research on reading is pretty clear, there is no science of children, right? These are individual people with individual passions and individual lives, and we need to be thinking about, what is the experience that they're going to have in school as individuals? The science of reading says one thing, but the children are all different, and we need to be really thoughtful about what kinds of resources go into teaching children, not just the science of reading, but who they are as individuals.
Yeah, so, that's the -- one of the analogy I used on that one is, it's every kid learns in a different speed and phase, and they actually flourish on certain environment, right? So, we need to identify those and cater to the kids, like fishing lion, where fish will only flourish well and perform well in water as lion can do on ground. You cannot put lion into the water and expect the same result, and take fish and put it under the ground and expect the same result, right? So, finding that exact environment is very crucial for the kids to get benefited out of these programs.
Thank you all.
All right. The next question is for Blair, and you do have 90 seconds to respond. This is actually a part of a question from the public. According to DPI data, roughly 10% of our current Black and Hispanic 9th and 10th graders were reading at grade level last year. Even fewer were doing math at grade level last year. Is it possible we are redefining honors to meet an administrative need to increase honors participation? Do you think the students see through that?
Do -- so, the first piece was a statistic about reading and math proficiency, and the second part is, are we -- sorry.
So, this question is about honors and advanced learning.
Okay.
Yep. Do you want me to start over?
No, no, just from the part where you said, is it possible that?
Is it possible we are redefining honors to meet an administrative need to increase honors participation? Do you think the students see through that? What is your opinion on the expansion of earned honors while the district is struggling with academic achievement, especially for Black and Hispanic students?
Interesting question. First, I want to say that I have taught at West High School standalone honors, US History IX, earned honors, US History IX, which is the current model that the board has okayed moving towards, and a third model of honors called earned -- embedded honors, in which there are heterogeneous groupings of students, where some students opt for more challenging material within the heterogeneous class. And so, I have a lot of experience with honors. Do I think that we are redefining honors to meet the administrative need to increase participation in honors? I do not. I think that the reason MMSD is looking at making changes to the honors system is because children who could be doing honors-level work are opting out of it because of the identity-based and interpersonal problems with honors within the schools. And then, the last part of the question was, do I support earned honors?
I guess just what is your opinion on, you know, the expansion of, you know, trying to get more participation into honors through, you know, earned honors?
Yeah, I think earned honors is great. I think that I have seen brilliant children do incredibly well in heterogeneous classrooms, with classrooms with lots of different ability levels. And so, I'm in favor of that. The other thing that I want to say about that is, when we talk about technical questions, like, do we have earned honors or embedded? Is it earned or standalone? These are technical questions, but we have a holistic problem about, what is the classroom experience like for children? Is it setting their brains on fire? Is it flexible to their interests? Is it responsive to their emotional needs? And the question about if the course catalog is going to say earned or embedded or standalone is a small, very small piece of that puzzle.
All right. Any responses for one minute?
I can give the response. I have a very short one. I tried to combine all three into one. Statistics, so, we're talking about honors program. It's actually only talking about high schools. We have to look at this from all the way from elementary school, advanced learning. We had to identify kids or their -- the disparities are coming. What the number of stats you're giving it, because high school honors are only looked at high school level. It was not looked at -- it needs to be early learning, right? So, early literacy, you should start from the early literacy from the elementary school. When you start that one, advanced learning from high school, middle, elementary school, and take that into a transition into middle school, will only help advancing into the honors program. I'm all for honors because in a world where there is no standardized test going forward for college applications, they will be looking at all of these honors programs and advanced classes that kids are taking. Those are critical for applications and jobs moving forward, so I would -- sorry. Go ahead.
Nikki, go ahead.
As everyone pretty much knows my opinion of this, I believe in earned honors. I believe in standalone honors. I believe in MMSD's view of voice and choice, in which students get to choose the classes that are best for them. In my opinion, I think Badri happens to be right. We need to start at probably the kindergarten level, get rid of the standardized tests, which were created so -- for the eugenics movement, and instead, focus on the learning of individual students. But focus on -- but until we can do that, I think we must have both earned honors and standalone honors.
Blair, do you have any final 30-second thoughts?
I'm not a 30-second thought person.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you all. The next question is for Badri again. Do you think the Behavior Education Plan is working? Why or why not? And you have 90 seconds.
Yeah, the Behavior Education Plan is actually well thought out, put together by community people and teachers and students and everybody put together that plan. It's put together very well, but it's not working because it's not implemented simultaneously in all the schools. Implementation, we are having an implementation problem with the Behavior Education Plan. That needs to be revisited, why it is not implemented properly. It's not -- elementary schools to middle schools to high school, you have different ways of using the program, and you don't have enough resources at elementary and middle schools, so they are not implemented at all some places. So, we need to revisit and to reprogram that. We need to, post-pandemic, the behaviors of the kids and society has changed. So, we need to revisit this program as a community, as parents and teachers, see how we can help make the schools more safer. Right now, teachers are not feeling safe. Kids are not feeling safe, and we need to re-implement this program again with more changes to the today's world. Thank you.
Blair or Nikki? Nikki, go ahead.
All right, I'll go. Very simply, Behavior Education Plan is too long, one. Two, it doesn't work. Reason it doesn't work is because, as Blair stated earlier, we do not have ideal classrooms. In order for the Behavior Education Plan to work, we need ideal classrooms with perfect staffing levels. We don't have that. Very simply, it was created as a wonderful idea to stop -- to help and improve disparities in both treatment on disability and on race. Unfortunately, the only people it has affected negatively the most are Black and Brown students and our students with disabilities, and therefore, it needs to be changed with teacher input, direct staff input.
Blair?
Yep. So, when the BEP was first born, sorry about that, when it was born, the goal is, like Nikki said, to decrease disparities and to make sure that children aren't being targeted by race or by ability level for punishment is right, but the resources required, we're not put in place with it. It's also the -- it's not an education plan, right? Like, we don't actually have a plan for how to work with kids, about how to be together in community. That is not a plan that we have that we're using, and it needs to be, because this is what schools are, learning communities where people are -- young people are practicing being together in community. And the other piece that I want to say about the BEP in 15 seconds, this is another example of endless effort towards technical fixes to what are not technical problems. I think that was under 15.
All right. This next question is for Nikki. The district is in the process of creating a new three-year special education plan, while the recent release of a 2021 report on special education programming found many opportunities for improvements in MMSD. What can the board do to help students with disabilities?
Very simply, one, I'd like to thank Scott first for helping make that report public as the board originally only saw the summary until an open records request was filed. Two, what we need to do with students with disabilities is this: we need full integration, one. Two, we need to make sure that IEPs are followed. The most anti-racist IEP is an IEP that is followed. We have to make sure that academic standards are rigorous and set to the individual child. Right now, we have a situation in which you could get a diploma, we call it graduating IEP, in which you get a diploma that isn't a full diploma. That doesn't help any student on any job. We need to make sure, instead, put the student first, put the resources first, and realize the IEP is a contract. It is something that is required. Today, the US Supreme Court ruled that you no longer have to follow all of IDEA before you can sue under the Americans with Disabilities Act. It just came down this afternoon. Very simply, it means if we don't start following these IEPs, we will be legally liable, and we should be.
All right. Badri or Blair, would you like to respond?
So, the IEP, the most important issue here is the resource constraints that we have from school to school. Some schools have allocated staff for it, some don't. It is not implemented equally in all schools. We got to make sure we have enough funding for special ed. Every kid will have a different needs. We need to identify that one as well, so it's going to be a lot of resource constraint. We need to find ways to fix that issue.
Thanks, Nikki, for that, for sure. I have two things to add. One is that when I -- sometimes when I think about all of the audits and reports that MMSD pays for, I am flabbergasted, because if you know the schools, if you're talking to people in schools, if you're in the schools, the findings of these reports are general knowledge. So, that's one thing. And the other thing is, when we talk about what can we do for students with IEPs, I want to talk a little bit about staffing. Cross-categorical special ed teacher roles are some of the hardest to fill. People don't stay in them. They're hard work. They're like all teaching. It's not mechanical, and so, if we want to be serving our students with IEP as well, we need to be thinking about how we attract and retain special ed teachers.
Thank you all.
Can I ask you a clarification?
One thing, Badri was absolutely right on resources. However, just want to clarify legally, IDEA states that you cannot use finance as a reason to not provide services. In fact, it's the one thing it explicitly says you can never do.
Thank you all. MMSD, like many -- or, sorry, this question's for Blair. MMSD, like many schools around the country, faces some pretty significant staffing shortages. How can the board help put the district in a position to attract and retain quality staff, both permanent and substitutes?
What a good question. I have two main points here. One is that the board and the administration need to understand that the staffing constraints are directly linked to student outcomes and student experiences. They are not separate, and if we want to talk about students thriving, we need to be talking about staff thriving, working conditions or learning conditions. The other piece that I wanted to say is, like, it's not that hard. Like, we need to see a budget every single year with full COLA and full steps and lanes. Like, we need to see what it will cost to actually pay teachers that their hour, even right -- I'm still on a teacher contract in another district. Our salaries are not declining with each year. And the last thing I want to say about that is, it is hard to overlook the moral injury to be told that you're an essential piece of the school, that you're super-valued, that you're what makes the school run, and then to have to beg for cost-of-living adjustments every single year. So, the basic answer to, like, what should the board do is demand and approve a school budget with full cost-of-living increases for staff every year.
Badri or Nikki? Badri, go ahead.
Yeah, so the retention of staff is very crucial, right? So it actually comes with true, two things, intrinsic and extrinsic. They'll have to have staff, not just about teachers, all staff. First of all, we need to provide the safety for them to feel to come and motivated to teach, right? So that's intrinsic. And then they have to have that accomplishment they did, right? So they are, it's a public service. They're teaching our kids. They feel, and they, kids are getting that value. They feel intrinsic. So as a board members, we need to bring that intrinsic value to the board, teachers. Making the teaching profession as, the system is verifying the whole teachers and making the system break, right? So it's, they have to have that intrinsic value. Extrinsic, for sure, definitely, right? With inflation so high, we need to make sure teachers are paid well. Thank you.
Nikki, go ahead.
Yes. There's a very, very short answer to this. We must provide COLA. We must provide steps and lanes. Blair, it's right. I haven't voted for a budget in the past three and a half years. There's a reason I haven't voted for a budget, because I can't vote. I keep being told it's a moral document. But every time I'm told it's a moral document, I'm told that it should be balanced on the backs of our teachers and our staff. And that's something I cannot and will not do, ever.
30 seconds? Okay, go ahead.
I want to add that when we talk about the resources that teachers need to do their jobs, that all school staff need to do their jobs, those resources are not just financial. It takes time and intellectual capacity to do our jobs well. And when the Board of Ed is approving a budget, and those budgets are linked to work plans for schools, one thing that could go a long way in retaining teachers is making sure that those work plans are doable, and that the temporal resource, the time to think about your work, to adjust your work to the students in front of you, is part of that. It's not enough to just say, we've got the budget balanced monetarily. Is the time budget balanced? And is the cognitive capacity budget balanced? Because those are real questions.
Thank you all very much. We have a quick lightning round here. So we'll just go down the table, couple-word answers. So first question is, what is your favorite book? Nikki?
Let's see, Brave New World by Adolphus Huxley.
I can't answer this. I read, I read A Hundred Years of Solitude for the first time a couple of years ago, and I haven't stopped thinking about it.
Life of Pi.
Thank you all very much. I've got a reading list to add to. Who was your favorite teacher?
Starting this way?
Yeah.
Favorite teacher, I have two. Ms. Mahalco, fifth grade, for protecting me physically as well as emotionally. And Mrs. Lundin, who's the only reason I'm an advocate today, because she openly let, stopped discrimination and told me that I was allowed to learn like everyone else. For that, I'll be forever grateful.
I'm going to go with the classic 11th-grade English teacher, Del Shortliff.
It's really hard, and I've been to so many schools, so many colleges. Yeah, the quick answer is my parents, is my first teachers.
Thank you very much. And then the final lightning round question, what was your favorite subject in school?
History.
History.
Math.
Thank you all very much.
All right, this next question, definitely not lightning round, back to the 90 seconds response. It's for Badri. The pandemic has left many students facing new mental health challenges. What can schools do to help students navigate their mental health amid the ongoing pandemic or recovery from the pandemic?
Pandemic brought, just not about school. The entire, our living standards, living style has changed for the entire community has changed. Schools and the board has to involve the community to bring the solutions for this, right? So it's not something you can fix only in school, it'll be done, right? So it's coming, everything happens in outside community, comes back into the school. That is the most important thing we have to remember. So it's not just teaching kids, it's also teaching parents, teaching community. We have, all have to work together to solve that issue.
All right, Nikki or Blair? Would you like to respond?
Sure. Okay. The first thing is slow down, like the exact opposite of accelerating learning. Slow, just slow down, right? Like, kids come back to school, I'm like, okay, well, you really got to get your focus standards, we got to do it fast, because you got to get like 1.25 years of academic growth this year, despite the fact that we're all traumatized. Slow down. Focusing on interpersonal relationships. And this is like, you know, the thing that really gets me is like, this is what we said. We're like, we, we really need to focus on the emotional health of kids. And when we came back, it was, we got the exact opposite treatment. And then the, the last thing is, you know, kids are really clear that they want curriculum that is connected to their interests and is connected to the community. And that would go a long way, I think, if we could be seeing school as a time that students could be saying, here's what I'm interested in. Who in my community is working on this? How can the adults in my school support me to connect with those people in the community about that? That would go a long way. You know, I think it felt for a lot of kids like they got abandoned. And, you know, frankly, like, they kind of did. We all kind of did. And to patch that back together, I think, would go a long way.
Schools were never supposed to do the job of the entire society. Unfortunately, during the, but unfortunately during the pandemic, that's what happened. We became food bags, mental health centers, learning centers, all at once. And now we're trying to force our kids back into a very narrow mold. That's not going to happen, and that's not going to work. And we have to realize that if we say we're truly prioritize mental health, then that means giving staff and students a mental health day. That means providing them with the resources needed and not just saying that, cutting them every budget.
All right. This next question is for Nikki. The district has faced lawsuits and public scrutiny over its transparency and handling of open records requests, including recently receiving a so-called award recognizing it as no friend of openness. What can the board do to ensure the district is transparent and accountable to the public?
I've been pretty open on this one. Our board is, our board tries to be open. Our administration is probably one of the most utterly opaque entities I have ever seen. It took me four and a half months to get an open records request answered, and not all of it was answered. If I can't get it, who else will? Now, here's my issue and what we have to do about it. One, open records requests are not an option. They are not optional. They need to be filled. Two, we have a duty to answer these requests. Instead of making them financially prohibitive or saying it's an open records issue when we don't want to ask, answer a question, neither of those are appropriate. We need to have quarterly, even weekly updates on what information has been given to us and what has been given to the board and what hasn't. Our community deserves to know what is going on, rather than having to follow one board member's Facebook page, and for God's sakes, I have to update that thing eight times a day. I mean, that's not necessarily the best way to be transparent. I miss a lot. So we, we need a better system. And that, and that means we focus on filling the requests, providing the legal services, but stressing to the legal counsel that this is not optional, that it is required, and that we have failed to do so. And that is to our detriment.
Blair or Badri?
Sure, I can go. The first thing is, I, I want to see MMSD moving away from this stance that there are easy, obvious answers and running schools is just like a mechanical process, and adopt instead an experimental approach and become a learning organization. I think often about Nichelle, current board member, Nichelle Nichols' work with the Black Excellence Coalition a few years ago is an incredible example of that, that stance towards getting, getting better as a system. That's the, that's the first thing. And the second thing is really specific. I don't know if everybody knows that when you email board@mmsd.org, it actually goes to the administration, which is wild. And like, you know, I've gotten caught in that and had, you know, my supervisor call me, say, hey, did you email the board about this thing? And so like, a real quick fix for transparency and openness is like, stop that.
If you send it to our individual addresses, then it won't.
I learned, I learned.
Badri, would you like to respond?
Yeah, the transparency is one thing I wanted to bring a focus to the board, right? So we cannot blame staff, administration, and expect them to return at the same time too, right? So what we need is to modernize it. Give them the resources to provide the data. Open records, I work with open records with state government. How we provide that one is make the data available for anybody, anytime, to go online, look it up. All of the data that is not confidential can be provided. Look it up, deer metrics as an example, if anybody is looking at it. If you want to know anything about deers, what is the population, what is the kill rate, how many accidents are happening, how many licenses are we giving? Was one issue that was there, and I was instrumental in bringing that system along. You cannot blame staff. Keep complaining on them. I work with teenagers. I have teenagers. If you keep complaining to them, that's where your staff retention issue is coming. They will be leaving you. You need to give them resources to provide the data for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Nikki, do you have anything to add in 30 seconds?
Basically, Bill Luter's unfortunately is, is right. We need to do better, and we need to follow through. And I thank Simpson Street Press for calling us out when we don't. It's, I loved your most recent post regarding that on how, on celebrating such a week. Let's hope we listen.
Thank you. This next question is for Blair. With the return of full-time, in-person learning for, back in the 2021, 22 school year in MMSD, the district provided virtual learning opportunities for some students and families that requested it. What do you view as the future of virtual learning in MMSD? How can it be used?
Okay, so you're asking me about my vision for the future, which is scary to me because I have wild hopes and dreams for the future of our schools and our cities. And I don't want to talk about them in public because I'm not on the board yet, and I don't know yet what our city can and will support. But I do know that, at least in high schools, at least with upper, upper class, so, upperclassmen, I don't know, 11th and 12th graders, at least with 11th and 12th graders, virtual learning offers so many possibilities, so, so many options. I think it would be incredible to imagine a future MMSD where by the time you're in 11th or 12th grade, you, you are linked into the community. You're attending classes more like a college student, a couple of times a week, where virtual learning is a part of that. So, so I don't want to get too into the details, because like I said, I don't know what our community is going to want to support. And my ideas are not, I have a lot of ideas, but I don't want to sub my ideas in for, for what our community together puts together for schools. So that's, that's all I'll say about my hopes and dreams for the future.
Any responses?
I would say modernizing, right? So modernizing the teaching and learning experiences is very crucial. We cannot learn from the same books and papers what we did 50 years ago. The future will look different. We need to give those resources, which also includes the virtual learning. That's the future. The pandemic pushed us too fast into it. We learned a lot of lessons. I think we have to learn from it and then make it more modernized, right? So we have to think about future. Before pandemic, people were thinking computers is going to be a distraction. Cell phones are distractions for kids. But that's where we are going. And it's going to be, we need to modernize our education and learning practices for both how to teach and how to learn.
First thing you do on virtual learning is make sure you include the employee handbook on exactly what teachers are paid for. Right now, I still don't know. And I would really like to know fully on what can be provided, what isn't. Second thing you do with virtual learning is realize there are certain things that cannot be made virtual. Right now, our special ed students have lost so much during the pandemic because things were not provided, even when they could have been provided, because the only virtual model. And that is basically stating whether or not you can learn is based on whether you're physically capable or whether your family can afford the internet to sign on. And both of those are terrifying thoughts.
All right. Badri, the next question is for you. What would you prioritize in upcoming school budgets, given the challenging financial situation and significant concerns from staff and the public about subjects like the arts, class sizes, and staffing allocations? And how can the board and administration take student and teacher voices into consideration for the budget?
So the board, it's not one-person priority. It's collaboration, right? So that is what I will. My primary goal is to bring the collaboration, not only just about teachers, they're giving recommendations, students asking for it, communities asking, what is, universities are asking, what is the job market out there. Looking at all of those features, right? All of those factors into your consideration moving forward. That's how we prioritize. It's not one-person priority, one person's bias on one program versus other. It's a consensus. We need to work with the community, with the administration, with the teachers, and the students, what they are learning which way, right? So it's, it's a consensus. So it's not individual priority.
Blair or Nikki?
Okay. I only got a half my ideas down. So, so what I really want to see for the next budget is MMSD prioritizing what the, what the student experience is going to be like in schools. So when we're spending money, I want everyone to be asking themselves, what are the students going to think about this? What is the student experience of this going to be like? And if it's not, I think they're going to love it, like, and it's not required by, by state or federal law, then I don't think we should spend the money on it. If it, if we can't, if we can't be prioritizing what our students are experiencing in schools, we're going to lose them. And then the other piece is, is staffing. Schools are social institutions. They're person-to-person organizations, and if we don't have the people, we don't have the schools. I have 15 more seconds. Okay, I don't think I can make my last point in 15 seconds. Sorry.
Very, very simply, first priority, COLA with, with full steps and lanes. It's non-negotiable in my book. Second, most important thing is staffing allocations. I've tried for six years to see the staffing workbooks. I'm still not allowed to see them until three weeks before the budget is released. I'm sorry, these decisions have already been made and cuts have been made that the board does not see. That needs to change, especially if we want to be transparent. And then most importantly, we need to fund the arts. Why are we going to spend money on beautiful auditoriums such as this when we're going to cut every art feeder program we have? Then, do we want them to sit empty? Just doesn't make sense.
Badri, do you have anything for the last 30 seconds? All good? All right. Nikki, next question's for you. Whoever the board hires as the next permanent superintendent will become the fifth person hired to lead the district since 2019, including the expected interim leader yet to be appointed for when Dr. Jenkins retires. How important is longevity in that position? And how will you ensure whoever is hired is committed to staying in the role in MMSD?
Longevity is always going to be important. I'm not going to tell someone how to do their job, and I am going to prioritize it. But what's more important, longevity is to make sure that they are good fit for our staff, for our students, for our teachers, because you cannot run a district without realizing the, the complexities of the situation. My goals as a superintendent are as follows. One, I want them to be as close to in-state, if not in-state, as possible. Two, I want them to be able to have a relationship that is not controversial with our unions. I want them to be able to get along with our I want them to be able to get along with our staff. And most importantly, we prioritize longevity by rewarding people for not just how long they stay, but for what they provide during that term and how they help each group, whether they be the janitors, whether they be special ed teachers, whether they be fellow administrators. That's more important than longevity.
Badri, I can see you.
Yeah, longevity is very, very important, especially, right? So organizations that are trying to start implementation plans, if you don't have the same continuity and the stability, how you implement that plan, and you keep constantly changing your superintendent, it's, it's changing direction every time. It takes a long time to take that inertia to move forward if you keep changing administrators. So that should be the top priority to make sure the, the next superintendent not only going to bring the continuity and stability to the organization, should also have the collaborative leader. That's what we need right now as a collaborative leader. There's so much disconnect between the, within the organization with administrations, unions, teachers, staff, parents. There's a lot of disconnect going on right now. So the next superintendent should be a leader that everybody can look up to and who can bring the collaboration between the society here. Thanks.
Blair?
Yep. So I think superintendent longevity would be nice, but more important is the longevity of, of a vision for MMSD. I tell a story about when I was with the Rocket, the MMSD's like innovation think tank people, trying to figure some stuff out about scheduling at West because West teachers don't have common planning time. They can't get together in their courses to talk about what they're teaching. And we're trying to say, is there any way that we could make this happen? And they, you know, because it's funded by AMFAM, they had a VC person come in and she says, I'm a venture capital person. In my field, people try and see change, a return on investment in seven to 10 years. And everybody else in the industry thinks that's really fast. So, so more than the individual's longevity, I'm super concerned with the longevity of the vision because I agree that the cost to the system of changing direction constantly is really, really high financially and capacity wise. And then how do you ensure that you get that person? I think that we want to be looking for somebody who has a track record of leading learning organizations, who does not say, I have the solution, I've done it here, I've done it here, and I can do it in Madison because local context really matters.
Nikki, do you have anything for 30 seconds?
Nope.
All right. This is our last question of the night, and it is for Blair. The achievement gap or opportunity gap is still very present and has even worsened in some areas since the pandemic, according to DPI data. How will you work to reset the focus on the achievement gap or opportunity gap post-pandemic? And how will you ensure the board and administration is transparent during this process?
Okay. So I think that when we talk about the achievement gap or the opportunity gap, what can tend to happen is we, the assumption in that framing is that our schools are like amazing systems and that just like, students of color just like, aren't keeping up. And that's false and racist. Our, oh my God. Okay, our schools are products of white supremacy. They reinforce white supremacy. And if we want to talk about how we make sure all students are thriving in our schools, we need to fundamentally change both the, the structure of our schools and the purposes of them. I know my opponent talks a lot about competitiveness. This is like the exact opposite of my vision for our schools. And I think that's the exact opposite of what we need to see, to see true, true, like, truly deep achievement, not just in test scores, but in like, the quality of lives that people are living in Madison when they graduate in the future. That's a, ooh, I feel like my heart is beating so fast because there's so much in that question. I hope I gave enough for people to make a choice at the ballot.
Badri, do you have any response?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Absolutely. The achievement gap or, or more commonly, opportunity gap is still very present and has even worsened in some areas since the pandemic, according to DPI data. How will you work to reset the focus on the achievement gap slash opportunity gap post-pandemic? And how will you ensure the board and administration is transparent during this process?
As mentioned earlier, right? So the achievement gaps, it's actually starting all the way at elementary school level. So we need to start focusing early education. The board has to be very transparent on how those programs are getting done. It's not just how, who's graduating. It's not the numbers. Yes, I am for competitive schools because that's where everything is moving towards, right? We are competing. If you are not competing in school, eventually you will be competing outside in the world. So we need to have a competitive student, so, but those are all starts from early education. So elementary schools onwards and that, that's what we need to bring forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Nikki?
On the achievement gap, very simply, if you want to make anything with the achievement gap, one, smaller class sizes, you can't learn when there are 30-plus students in a class. Two, you pay your staff and you pay your teachers. You provide actual support and mental health days. You can't be anti-staff and pro-student, it just doesn't work. And three, on the achievement gap, and what you need to do is to realize standardized testing is not the only way of learning. They were created by, as Blair said, they have a racist background, they also have an ableist background, they were created by the eugenics movement in France. Very simply, we need to focus on learning by doing as well as learning by, for the love of learning, not just who we, who is doing the best. I want people in love with compassion, not competition.
Do you have a 30-second thing, Blair?
I do not.
Okay. Thank you all for the answers to all of our questions. We'll move to closing statements, and we're going to do the same order we did for opening statements. So you have two minutes, and we'll start with Nikki.
Thank you very much for giving me a great six years so far on the Madison School Board. I ask you for your vote because I care not just on the students, who are the most important future we have, but I care about our staff, whether you're custodian, a teacher, CC aide, a bilingual, bilingual staff, a, a behavioral assistant, it doesn't matter. You deserve to be treated with respect, honor, and dignity. We've gotten away from that. We need to focus on transparency, but most important, we need to bring the joy back into learning. I don't want kids so stressed out that it's causing mental health problems. I want recesses that are actually recesses, and I want lunches that are actually fun to eat, not just a hard-boiled egg with a slice of string cheese. I want our students to have the best, but that can't be done in a vacuum. And that cannot be done by a top-down administration. It must be done with collaboration between the board and the administration, and it requires active work from the board to actively be involved in all forms of the decision-making. I ask for your vote on April 4th.
Thank you, Nikki. Badri, you're next, two minutes.
So the, I asked for your vote for one reason. We need the more collaboration in the community right now. We have people that are dividing us, and I think I have experience working with the communities, bringing people together. That is my strength. We talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion, and we don't have that one within our board itself. We don't have equity with the geographical location within Madison. How many board members are coming from, living and also representing community from west of Madison? I wanted to be the voice for the west of Madison where the highest number of enrollments of students, highest number of staff available, but there is no voice from the west of Madison. That is equity I'm talking about. Diversity. I'm talking about the immigrants. I've been to listening sessions. Lot of, the fastest-growing community in Madison in the United States is Southeast Asians. They've been saying, we're not, we're not getting heard. We need a voice in the board. We need to have those, and I'm here to bring the voice of a parent. I'm involved in every activity that happens at school. There is a communication, email comes from this principal, there is something happened, my heart drops as soon as I see something happening in school. I am worried. So I want to be that voice to raise those concerns as a parent, as a community member. I'm, I'm listening to all of the community members every single day in and day out, not just about in-school, out-school, at play areas. I'm always there. That's why I ask to, for me, to be your representative. Thank you.
And finally, Blair, two minutes.
Yep. I'm Blair Moser-Felson. I'm running for seat six. Election's on April 4th. I hope that you vote for me. The main pitch to you is that schools are complex. Teaching and learning is uncertain, it's complex, it's creative, and it's interpersonal. And to do that work well for students and staff, I know, I know what it takes to do that well. And so what that means is that if you elect me to the board, I'm going to be able to tell what we can't, what we can't afford to not be able to afford. I'm going to be able to tell beyond just the financial resource. What are the temporal implications for all of these choices that the board gets to make? And how is that going to impact the classroom experiences for the young people in our city? I have the experience in school to be a bridge between the proposals that come to the board, the decisions that the board has to make, and how that's going to play out in the classrooms where our children are every single day. Please vote for me.
Thank you all very much. Thank you to those, oh yeah, that's fun. Thank you to those of you who attended in person tonight, those of you who watched on the live stream at captimes.com. Thank you to Taylor and Simpson Street Free Press for collaborating. Thank you to the candidates for being here. Thank you all.